For September 19th, 2022. If everybody could sort of come to order, I think we'll be in good shape. So, welcome everyone to the study session for the Wheat Ridge City Council for September 19th, 2022. We have one item on our agenda tonight, which is item number one, the Land Acknowledgement Committee update. So I would like to open our meeting tonight, as we open most of our meetings with public comment on items that are on the agenda. And I will also notice that we are having a special council meeting. I call a special council meeting for after this meeting concludes, and we will take comment on that special council meeting now, if there's any comment to be held. So I don't have anyone signed up to speak here on my sign-up sheet. If you're here and haven't signed up and want to speak on this agenda item, you may do so now. And I'll go to our clerk and see if anyone online, if you're online and would like to speak, you may raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting. So let me see if anyone has raised their hand.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have one attendee who would like to speak, Renee Millard Chacon.
Okay, Renee, if you would please unmute yourself and introduce yourself. Give us your first name and your last name. If you'd please spell your last name and give us an address. And then you'll have three minutes, and the clerk will be setting a timer.
I'm Renee Millard Chacon. I'm a Commerce City resident, Indigenous resident, disproportionately impacted community member from Commerce City. And we live in the land of the Ute, the Cheyenne, the Arapaho, the Shoshone, the Ka'awha, the Lakota, the Comanche, the Apache, the Navajo, the Chicano, and 48 tribes that still live and travel through this space. I am Environmental Justice Action Task Force for CDPHE, co-chair of Equity Analysis Subcommittee, and I am also co-founder of Women from the Mountain Indigenous Women-led nonprofit, which teaches specifically in cultural education and trauma sensitivity with equity analysis. Should I keep going?
Yes, please.
I'm very grateful to be in this space. Rachel asked me to come into this space because I do come from the Indigenous communities here. I am Dinech, Kana, and Filipina. I can exist nowhere else. My family has been here way before it was a state. And I know the importance of legitimately fitting cultural erasures, because where I deal in policymaking, my community is still considered a data gap. Indigenous communities in Colorado, specifically in Commerce City, deal with cumulative impacts of environmental racism and have since the founding of Colorado. We still deal with so many forms of it that we do have to pass bills like 1266, which establishes the Environmental Justice Action Task Force. When you talk about land acknowledgements, you're finally helping ease with cultural sensitivity, cultural responsiveness, and trauma sensitivity, legitimate erasures to the American identity Indigenous communities have had to endure, and we survived. I have been taught by my cultural educators and privileged to be in my cultural traditions to now teach as a woman that holds the smoke, specifically in Danza Esteca. I've been teaching for over 10 years. I've taught everywhere, from Chicano Park in San Diego, California, to Texas, to here in Denver at Grupo Coro Aslan. But we actually also teach our other cultural traditions, including how to make a traditional drum, all the way down to Language is Culture, which actually is going to be this Saturday, even an adult choir called Kuikakali. So it's incredibly important that when you make room for land acknowledgement, you're actually making room to be an ally and accomplice, to truly understand where there has been cultural erasures of many identities, starting with Indigenous communities, and especially the Cheyenne and Arapaho. They don't even live in Colorado. There's so many initiatives that rename and reclaim this land and also start recognizing our resources as sources of life, which directly attributes to the form of equity analysis that I do, straight from Indigenous communities to the biosphere. We have worked with the Southern Ute and the Ute Mountain Ute in renaming Mistihiaje Coalition when I was at Spirit of the Sun to Owl Woman Mountain. It was once called Squaw Mountain, which is a derogatory term. I've also worked in helping pass MMR bills here and recognizing where data gaps can legitimately contribute to state and federal agency loopholes for a very mobilized community of Indigenous communities. So I thank you very much for listening to me. If you would like to learn anything about what we do for Women from the Mountain, please look us up at womenfromthemountain.com, that's Women with an X from the mountain, and sundown.org for the type of environmental justice and why this directly pertains to cultural sensitivity and trauma sensitivity, to heal the biosphere in all of our communities, including our elements. So thank you very much for letting me speak at this time.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other speakers online? Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We will go on to our item number one, which is the Land Acknowledgement Committee update. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, tonight we have Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec Director, who's been shepherding this project, and some of her committee members in the audience. So I'll turn it over to Karen to get us rolling.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here today. We have a wonderful committee here. Almost everybody is present, but not quite everybody. And they've worked really, really hard to get us to where we are today, and we can't wait to share a little bit about what we've done with you and what our next steps are, because we are not done. I will just start with that. And I'm grateful for Renee just calling in. That was wonderful to hear, so thank you. So first, I just want to acknowledge our committee members, and I'm going to ask you to stand if I say your name, please. Deb Bolick is here. Nikki Larson. I know Kathleen Martel couldn't be here. I heard she's doing something really awesome. Morgan Richards. Teresa Sheldon, I don't believe is here. Jenny Snell. Karen Stanley is not here. Anissa Valdez. And Dawn Wood, I don't believe is here. And then Susan Bennett is the other staff member. She's our environmental interpreter for the city, if you haven't met her yet. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about how we got here. And some of you may recall, because we had a study session where we briefly approached this subject last year. But initially, this topic came up during a Wheat Ridge 101 discussion, and it was something that interested me. And so we had further discussions and decided, we had a couple of council members, Val Nosler Beck and Denise Hoppy, that were really interested in pushing this forward. And so we brought that to council. You all acknowledged that it was something that you supported us moving forward in creating a committee and moving forward with land acknowledgement here in Wheat Ridge. So that meeting was back in October of 2021. And then I went through the process of recruiting committee members through our Race and Equity Task Force, the Historical Society, Cultural Commission, and Parks and Recreation Commission. We held our first meeting as a land acknowledgement committee on March 30th of this year. And since then, we have had six total committee meetings and a field trip to History Colorado. Our meetings went from, I think we met for an hour, an hour and a half, and then the committee wanted to meet more frequently and for longer. So we've actually, you know, they were very excited about being involved and really taking the time to do this right. And that's one thing that I will mention, too, is that there's a lot of, a lot of people have ideas of how you do this, but there's no one right way to do this. And so we've consulted with a lot of different people, and we've moved forward with the process that we feel is right for us and would love to have further conversation with you at the end of this presentation, of course. One of the other things that I wanted to mention that wasn't on the steps is we did reach out to other communities who have done this. And the one that I really was able to have conversation with was the city and county of Broomfield. And it's really, their Open Space Board pushed this forward. So I don't necessarily believe that it's something that the city has adopted per se, but the Open Space team utilizes a land acknowledgement. And then staff connected offline with both History Colorado staff. So Sam Bach, who will be mentioned further in this presentation, he's just a wonderful staff person and historian and knows just so much about the Indigenous peoples from this area and shared a lot with us and about the land acknowledgement process and how they've utilized it at History Colorado and how they inform other organizations that seek their assistance as well. And then also, I reached out to State Senator Jesse Danielson, and she's done a lot of work on various items related to Indigenous people in Colorado. And she provided me a lot of guidance and just steps along the way, because again, there's sometimes conflicting information where, I believe the last time I came to council, it was recommended that communication to the tribes comes from council. And what she was saying to me is they're really going to want to hear from the people doing the work. So they're going to want us to reach out and have those conversations. And so we've talked about that, and we'll have that included in our next steps as well. So next, I'm going to introduce Morgan Richards, who's going to talk to you a little about the draft land acknowledgement statement that we created.
I'd also quickly like to acknowledge and thanks former Wheat Ridge resident and now Arvada resident, Kiri Az, who helped me practice to be able to say the statement and the tribal names in their spoken languages, and also inspired me thinking about how do we do this with integrity and respect. So we worked really collaboratively on this, and I think it's amazing. It's bigger than just one of us. All of us on our committee contributed to this final draft land statement. We pause to acknowledge that we are on the traditional territory of the Cetis Tas, the Cheyenne, the He Nino E, the Arapaho, and the Nun Chi, the Ute. We further recognize the 48 contemporary tribal nations who lived on the lands that make up the state of Colorado. This area was the site of trade, hunting, gathering, and healing for many Native nations. As an inhabitants of these spaces, we honor the tribal nations' interconnected human relationship to land, air, and water. The expansion of industrialized civilization on this land came at a dire cost to these tribes and their descendants. As residents of Wheat Ridge, we commit to reconciling our problematic history by building authentic and respectful connections with the tribal nations who once lived here. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to working to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequities and recognize the current and future contributions of Indigenous communities in Wheat Ridge. As we move through our community, give pause to connect with the land that you are currently standing on. Now introduce yourselves spiritually. Build a relationship with Mother Earth that provides for all our relations. Please take a moment to honor these ancestral grounds and celebrate the resilience and strength that Indigenous people have shown. So it's really important to recognize that even in this draft statement, which will go out to all of the tribal nations, and as Renee pointed out, there's only the Ute that still have people who live here, you know, in community formally. That this may change in the future, and it's important to realize that getting it perfect and right the first time is not the goal. The goal is to, we keep learning and improving the way we talk about this and the way we acknowledge the people who were murdered and had land stolen from them in order for other people to settle here. Progress can be made. I think this is really well said. Mistakes and setbacks may occur. We have to give each other grace and the room to understand. We will not always land with this perfectly. What's important is we will move forward and we do better from what we learn when we make those mistakes. So we've got to hold space for the process and assume good intentions, even as we educate each other and our community. Tonight, our committee is not looking for edits from all of you or wordsmithing. We would like your support to move forward with our next steps and send it out to the tribal nations for them to let us know what they think we ought to improve upon in this.
And next, Jenny Snell is going to share some information on our action plan.
Thank you. Good evening. So I want to talk you through a few of our, well, our next steps, our action plan, as Karen said. I'm getting used to my readers. And I want to present all of these. We would love to have any feedback or thoughts, but I would ask that you hold those thoughts, jot them down until we get to the end, and we can have a good discussion about it. Some of these are more immediate, and some of these are going to be more long-term slash on the back burner, and then moving to the front burner and the side burner. And so we'll kind of move things along. But these are some, our first few that we're going to work on right away. As Morgan mentioned, we want to establish relationships with the tribes connected to Wheat Ridge, obviously finalize our land acknowledgement statement. We were thinking, and I think that the powers that be will decide, you know, as far as if it could be a proclamation read at a city council meeting or just how that would get launched, but that, we wanted to just mention that we're moving to finalize it and actually put it into action. Anything from, we're suggesting also that it eventually becomes part of meetings, city meetings, city council meetings, boards and commissions. Or instead of being read, we could also have a really nice recording. So that's another suggestion there. Anything bigger in the city, special events, ribbon cuttings, things like that, where our city and community members come together, we'd like to also utilize the land acknowledgement statement to have as part of those events as well. Education's a big piece with this, as Karen and Morgan both mentioned. Some possible ways to get the word out and actually provide some education and therefore some dialogue. We have the city website on here. I know that that's kind of a hot topic these days, but eventually, hopefully get to a point where we could have it on the city website as a permanent installation. Of course, our social media, educational programming and storytelling, ethnobotany, that's Susan's department. She's the authority on that. And she's already, Susan's already educated all of us quite a bit on a lot of the items that she knows tons more, and she could just spread the word more. So thank you for that, Susan. A link on your email signature is a city employee with a little bit, you know, is a little bit more information on, click here if you'd like to learn more. QR codes with resources and pronunciations, because the pronunciations are absolutely important and you've got to practice. So we also are recommending putting together a toolkit to educate particularly those with different role views, because this should be a part of our conversation. And not all conversations are easy, but they're important. Let me use the arrow key. Our additional items, and these are items that are kind of more ongoing, that might be, that might have a longer timeline. We're suggesting perhaps doing a fundraiser, fundraisers for, or taking donations for the tribes that are associated with Wheat Ridge. Signage in all of our parks, on trails, and in facilities. Susan's done some great preliminary work on that as well within our parks. Include in the employee board and commission onboarding. So that means anyone working for the city or anyone on a board or commission, there's a bit about it so that those folks can also start their journey with learning about it as well. And then including it in Wheat Ridge 101, which is a yearly class to learn more about Wheat Ridge and become more involved. And we have actually talked with Paige Piper of Local Works, and there's some talk of actually discussing it at the first meeting in October. So it could happen sooner rather than later. Also, sharing with our local businesses and schools and encouraging them to use it or create their own. I know, you know, schools are already kind of on this so that, you know, just getting, making sure that they know that other folks are talking about it as well and being a resource if we can. Another suggestion would be to sponsor a tribal athletic team. And then finally, the renaming of streets and/or parks, considering opportunities to incorporate into new park spaces also. And just a couple more, a few more. Providing an opportunity for Indigenous individuals in the Wheat Ridge community to engage and/or contribute through an opt-in process. So that being said, you know, you can opt in and share your knowledge, share your thoughts, share your experiences, because that's what makes us better. Also, connecting with Indigenous artists. As we all know, we have a wonderful art community here, a lot of talented folks, and just making sure that we're highlighting, connecting with and highlighting Indigenous artists. A traveling display has also been mentioned, and Deb from the Wheat Ridge Historical Society has brought the first part of that traveling display. These are arrowheads that are from our area.
Yeah, these are actually quite a jolly collection that owned by the city and two of the local counties. I almost thought that arrowheads here are, were found in Colorado, but not all of them.
Thank you.
And I guess what we're hoping is that we have these permanent displays in the city and or traveling displays. And these are only three of several other sets.
And Deb, if someone wanted to go and see those again, where could they see them?
After this park.
Thank you.
Jenny, I'm sorry, can you repeat that just through your microphone so it gets picked up on the recording, please?
Yes. The traveling display, which we have some of the arrowheads here, those are on permanent display right now at the Wheat Ridge Historical Park. Cool. Thank you. And then one final one here. Work with other municipalities as well as Wheat Ridge Boards, Commissions, and Task Forces. So again, joining forces with other communities, other cities, which Karen has already reached out to Broomfield, but there are, you know, lots of other communities around us that might be doing the same work, and it's a great time to share resources and help each other. So that is a good list of our upcoming action items. I will turn it back over to Karen, and she will give you some more good info. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. So just to wrap this up, we want to talk through our next steps. So Senator Jesse Danielson asked me to send her a succinct summary, and then she can share that with some individuals, tribal leaders that she knows, to make sure that she's making those connections and will provide me with some great contact information. And as I believe Morgan mentioned, that we will be sending this draft statement and all the action plan items to all 48 tribes. And we've been told, don't expect all of them to respond, but it's the courteous thing to do, to share this information and provide the opportunity for everybody to respond and acknowledge the work and provide any feedback. But that there are certain tribes, particularly the ones that we've mentioned in the land acknowledgement statement, that are critical in Wheat Ridge, that we absolutely have to have conversations with before adopting any final statement. So we will make sure to do that, and we want to do that directly by phone and making those initial steps for hopefully a long-term relationship with various tribes. Then we will schedule a land acknowledgement committee meeting to review the feedback that has been received, return to you all with an update and then a final land acknowledgement statement, and then continue the ongoing communication with the tribes and our continuous improvement, which again, I believe Morgan mentioned, that this is, you know, not something that stops here. It's something that we will continue to learn, continue to grow, continue to add action items, and hopefully these relationships will flourish. So we've provided in the presentation just a bunch of different resources in case you want to dive a little bit deeper into some of the things that we looked into. And then, any questions?
Well, thank you very much. That was a really thorough report, and I think really innovative. I'm really, really kind of, I'm really pleased. Thank you. Questions from council? We'll start with Councilwoman Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really, this was very thorough, and I appreciate your list of resources, and I just really want to say thank you so much. Now, I appreciate everybody on this committee doing this work. It was a committee that I wanted to also be able to do the work on, but I had taken on some other responsibilities. And so I just am...
Thank you.
Jenny, I'm sorry, can you repeat that just through your microphone so it gets picked up on the recording, please?
Yes, the traveling display, which we have some of the arrowheads here, those are on permanent display right now at the Wheat Ridge Historical Park. Cool, thank you. And then one final one here, work with other municipalities as well as Wheat Ridge Boards, Commissions and Task Forces. So again, joining forces with other communities, other cities, which Karen has already reached out to Broomfield, but there are, you know, lots of other communities around us that might be doing the same work and it's, it's a great time to share resources and help each other. So that is a good list of our upcoming action items. I will turn it back over to Karen and she will give you some more good info, thank you.
Thanks Jenny. So just to wrap this up, we want to talk through our next steps. So Senator Jesse Danielson asked me to send her a succinct summary and then she can share that with some individuals, tribal leaders that she knows to make sure that, that she's making those connections and will provide me with some great contact information. And as I believe Morgan mentioned, that we will be sending this draft statement and all the action plan items to all 48 tribes. And we've been told, don't expect all of them to respond, but it's the courteous thing to do, to share this information and provide the opportunity for everybody to respond and acknowledge the work and provide any feedback. But that there are certain tribes, particularly the ones that we've mentioned in the land acknowledgement statement that are critical in Wheat Ridge, that we absolutely have to have conversations with before adopting any final statement. So we will make sure to do that and we want to do that directly by phone and making those initial steps for hopefully a long-term relationship with various tribes. Then we will schedule a land acknowledgement committee meeting to review the feedback that has been received, return to you all with an update and then a final land acknowledgement statement. And then continue the ongoing communication with the tribes and our continuous improvement, which again, I believe Morgan mentioned that this is, you know, not something that stops here, it's something that we will continue to learn, continue to grow, continue to add action items and hopefully these relationships will flourish. So we've provided in the presentation just a bunch of different resources in case you want to dive a little bit deeper into some of the things that we looked into. And then, any questions?
Well, thank you very much, that was a really thorough report and, and I think really innovative, I'm really, really kind of, I'm really pleased, thank you. Questions from council, we'll start with Councilwoman Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really, this was very thorough and I appreciate your list of, of resources and I just really want to say thank you so much. Now, I appreciate everybody on this committee doing this work. It was a committee that I wanted to also be able to do the work on, but I had taken on some other responsibilities. And so I just am so glad that there were other people to be able to carry this forward. And I know that sometimes, you know, when you bring an idea forward like Val and I did, you don't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily mean that you have the space to be able to also drive that bus if you get the wheels going, but I appreciate that you guys are all driving that bus and thank you very much for all of this work. I look forward to what's in the future. I also just want to let you know that if at any point in time you need help with the phone calls or anything like that, I can do small project type work and so if you need that, let me know. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Weaver.
Likewise, this is just really amazing, thank you all for, for doing that. I can also see that, that I think private landowners would love to participate at some point, if there's a way that that can be thought about. I just, in my own case of a, a piece of land that's privately owned but conserved and that's a big part of, of conservation in this state as well and just making those connections, I think would be fabulous for the community to be able to be part of, I mean, of course they're part of the city, but also even more part of this land acknowledgement, so thank you all, it's really, I really appreciate the, the presentation as well and just the way that you're not asking us for specific draft and things that I, I just, thanks for educating us on, on that process as well, I think it's a good one.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I want to thank each one of you individually for your work on this. I know a lot of you are putting time into our community and other arenas too, and I think we all benefit from the different places that you are, you know, bringing your lived experience and your wisdom and your passion for our community because we're just better for it. I think one of the things when I first got involved in this city was I learned we do a lot in the city when we do it together. And so I just really also want to recognize Karen for how you're doing this process. I think there's a lot of ways of doing this and the slow way is the best way and the thoughtful, careful, deliberative way and inclusive way is, is right. So on this one, I'm really happy it's slow rolling out and very thoughtful and it's, it's a relief to not be giving suggestions on edits because that's what I did all day today. So, and it's, it's also really, I think, it's just a deep affirmation of our community to trust into the process on it. So I just appreciate you touching base with us where you are. So just kudos to the process, kudos to where you are. As to what we do with it when you're done, I will never run out of ideas for that. And one thing that did come to mind is I think I would really support us establishing an Indigenous Land Day in the city that we acknowledge on an ongoing basis so that we've got a template for that imperfect process so that we are continually being able to bring ourselves into accountability for, for this process on an ongoing basis so we don't lose, lose that space after you're done. And then, and then I don't know if there's an answer to this, but I'm just so excited at the thought of this going out to 48 different tribes, like that actually is like, like I feel that in my bones when you say that, like that's a really, it's like a first contact kind of feeling. I know that sounds a little weird, but it's, it's a really important sort of new frontier for us and how we're relating to who we are and how we're seen by others. And I would love to either offline or in this space hear a little bit more about like how we introduce ourselves so that like as we initiate that, that first original contact, I, I'm just really curious about the story we're telling about who we are in that space. And again, not tonight, but at some point either through, you know, I know all y'all on the committee or whatever, but it's really exciting to me and I just, I'm excited and I want to thank my peers on council for getting that started, so. And thank you, keep up the great work.
Thank you. Councilor Nosler Beck.
I had the privilege of participating in at least one of the meetings with everybody and it was a really incredible space to be in and really inclusive. I felt like I was at the beginning kind of a fly on the wall and, and then I was encouraged to really participate and bring some of my perspectives to the table and, and in that little snapshot that I got of this process that's been put together, Karen, I know you have been the lead on that, but it's because you've created this space where everybody's really been able to take a leadership role. So thank you all for the time investment here and also for making this a really open process. I, I want to just say that one of the reasons that this is so important personally is that, you know, there's pictures of my family in, in City Hall right out here, that Apelbacher Farm, those are, those are my ancestors and they were landowners here in 1880. And there are parks named after my family's land that they had here. And as a Coloradan raised, going to school, learning about our history and our communities and how they evolved, this is a missing piece of the history. And we have such an incredible opportunity because of all of the work that's been put, the intentional work that's been put into this to, to start to re-map how we tell the story. And I think it's, it's really exciting for me that while my kids are in school or potentially going to Apelbacher Park here in Wheat Ridge, they may see the name of what that space could have been originally, or they might be able to feel a bit more empathy about the people's steps that were taken on this land before our family was here. It's a different way and perspective of, of looking at community and the spaces that we're in and I'm just so grateful to each of you for putting this time in to make this a safe space to share with my fellow council members and the community about how important this is. There's been a lot of work done in the last few years, both in the equity and inclusivity spaces, but we really can't start to make any progress there until we dig deep in ourselves to figure out what we've got to fix within ourselves. And we're doing the hard work, Wheat Ridge, so I'm just so grateful for all of you. I wanted to just call out a couple of the, the action plan pieces. I love the idea of the, working with the schools to see what we can, we can work with there. The schools already, just this last weekend, we were opening the Anderson Park area, I'm forgetting what it's called, it's the Active Nature Play area, and that'd have been a great opportunity for us to incorporate both the schools and the Parks and Rec and the land use space. So really excited to see those connections already being made and ready to get moving as soon as we can. Also, the, the land acknowledgement is a long statement and not trying to wordsmith anything here, but I do, as we start to think about a way that maybe this could be incorporated into ribbon cuttings or into a city council meeting before we get started, it would be great if there was a version of this that doesn't take away from any of the meaning but is a little shorter so that we can get, get moving along to the meetings and makes it something that's a little more accessible for making this a part of our common vernacular. So those are two pieces, I'm really excited about.
If I can address that really quick, we did discuss that and that's our plan, we just didn't get to the shortened version yet. So absolutely for that reason, that's, that's quite a, quite a lot of language for, you know, at the beginning of every meeting or, you know, something like that, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also want to acknowledge everybody that put in the work to bring this forward. You answered all of the questions, you thought of all of the answers to all of our questions. And I, I just really wanted to bring attention to the education piece. I think that, you know, some of the, the opportunities to bring some of those tribal leaders into our community, into our schools and maybe activate the library and other parks and rec uses or buildings would, would be wonderful for Wheat Ridge. And, you know, two of our schools are expeditionary learning curriculum and so they bring in speakers and they go and visit speakers and so I think that there's ample opportunity for us to really collaborate with the Indigenous tribes and so I really appreciate that aspect of it and can't wait to see that come to fruition, so thank you all.
Thank you. Councilor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with everybody that's spoken before me, but I appreciate everybody's hard work and it, it does mean a lot, I think, to, to those that came before us, right? That's, that's, Wheat Ridge is a big history community, right? Doesn't matter how far back you go, history is a big part of what we are. I also want to acknowledge and I really think it is important that it's more than just a statement, so I, I think if it was just words, you know, words just get said and, and they don't mean anything after a while, but this is a lot of actions that go along with those words and I think that means a lot. I think that the, the education pieces, the, the, putting it in the, even, even into the email signatures so that people from outside of the city, when we send them an email, kind of see what we're about, I think that's really important. So I really appreciate that you guys have put a lot more thought into just coming up with a statement and I do appreciate that the, like Jenny said, the pronunciation of, of everything and I'm not even going to try to do that at the moment, but that, that means a lot and I think that that means a lot to the, the people that we're also trying to reach out to. When you're, when you're trying to reach out to somebody, it's, it's good to use their language and, and try to understand what they're about as well, so I appreciate all your hard work, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everybody as far as, thank you so much to staff and the committee for pushing this forward. There's some really nice ideas. When I was traveling in Florissant, the petrified forest, the National Park Service had all these signs with the plant names and they're both in American and in the U-tribe and I thought that was really, really interesting that, you know, to see that, because there's always that connection when you can, you kind of feel the roots of like word of this language kind of develop and you get that association. So I'd definitely be in favor of, you know, seeing something that, like that in our parks of, of having some different signage, some trails, QR codes. But yeah, I, I really appreciate us going forward and making those connections. I actually do have Native American history in my background and I have a deep appreciation for the outdoors, as a lot of you probably do know. And we're in a really special place here in Wheat Ridge. When I was at one of the meetings at the CML District, you know, the, the mayor of Golden said that the Clear Creek was really, you know, that was the heart of, of Golden and I really feel strongly that the, the Clear Creek for Wheat Ridge is kind of, that's really our special, you know, that's our soul, you know, it's our special place and so I really appreciate everything that everybody has done, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I also, I'm just going to echo what everybody else has said, thank you so much for your time, your work. The education piece is very important, history is very important and if it's not put out there, you know, then people don't learn. And keep it as simple as possible, especially if you're going to work with children, you know, and I agree having some leaders or representation going to the schools and talk with the schools about maybe being able to have a little spot during the day whenever or the librarians, you know, and I think it would be very, very much appreciated. So thank you for your time and your work, thank you.
Well, I'll bring us sort of to a close with this item and say thank you all. Who we got, I'm sorry, Councilor Holtein.
Sorry, I'll make this really quick because we've all been going on and on about our gratitude and excitement for this, but I just wanted to thank my friend Renee for sharing her perspective tonight. I'm really fortunate to get to work with her in some pretty powerful spaces and I just reached out to her because every time she speaks, her words are powerful but her voice is resonant and I just thought it would be nice for us tonight to, to have that in this space and so I just, I don't know if she's still on, but I just wanted to thank Renee, not just for her, her presence here tonight, but every time I get to share space with her, it really impacts how I view our world and whatever space we're in, so thank you Renee.
Okay, thank you very much. So anyway, I'll close things out with my appreciation for a great, a great story that you're telling. This is, this is sort of a really new form of knowledge that we have an opportunity to learn and it impacts our daily lives and it's, it creates a new history for us also. So I want to thank you very much, look forward to your continuing to work and continuing to report back to us, so thank you so much. Okay, that concludes item number one, we'll go to item number two on our agenda, that's staff reports, Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're asking for a special meeting after this study session and an executive session, so I will defer any comments until later.
Okay, let's see, do we have any elected officials' reports? Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Weaver and I had our District 3 meeting on Saturday, we had our dumpster, thank you to the staff and, and Mr. Goff and, and everybody who helped out with that, but we had a decent turnout, probably not as big as last year, but we had some good robust conversation as Mr. Mayor would say and we had some fun discussing with some of the neighbors, some of the issues and things that are going on and a lot of them were very excited about a lot of the different ordinances and things that we put forward the last couple of months, so thank you to everybody on that and I believe that's it.
Thank you. I want to go to our clerk, Clerk Kirkpatrick, do you have anything for us tonight?
Just a comment about the certificate of insufficiency which we issued to those circulating petition to refer ordinance 1744 to the voters. I just wanted to confirm that all council members got the certificate of insufficiency and the details behind it, because I'm not certain I all had all the right emails. I'm also wondering if there are questions you, you might want to ask now or later, I am happy to answer them. The next step, the final step in this process could be a protest. The charter allows any registered elector to file a protest, the deadline for that would be October 4th. At that point, we'll either hear the protest or move forward without one. Any questions? Yes, me?
No protest, yes.
They could protest anything about either the process of gathering the signatures or the way we validated the signatures and indeed several people have filed court requests for information on those very time.
Okay, any more questions for the clerk on that item? So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's see, I think I had, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Parks and Rec, Parks and Forestry and all of the partners that collaborated to make the nature play area at Anderson Park a reality. Was happy to attend the ribbon cutting and see a bunch of kiddos there, particularly from Willmore Davis because they helped with the design of the, of the area, so it was really great to see them come out and, and be so proud of the work that, that they dedicated to our city. And I, I want to thank the, the taxpayers and the residents of Wheat Ridge as well because the Anderson Park renovation was one of four of the 2E projects that we approved with the half a sales tax, half a cent sales tax increase. And, you know, that's our neighborhood park that we walk to on a very regular basis. We love, you know, walking the Clear Creek Trail, playing at Anderson Park and this is just a wonderful addition to, to Anderson, so thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Holtein.
Thank you. Two, two things for me, first of all, I just want to thank Local Works and partnership with the city for Dumpster Day, which was in my neighborhood this last Saturday and I, like, it started at eight and at 8:05 I drove down the street with my like Subaru full of branches and stuff and I almost, they almost didn't have room for it by the time I drove down the street, it was like, it was unbelievable, I think they filled all the dumpsters like in less than an hour, so wildly successful program and so kudos, kudos to all, all the dumpster success stories in, in my neighborhood this weekend. It's my trashy neighborhood, yeah. No, we're not trashy anymore, we're like completely devoid of our trash. Except for me, I still have a lot of branches because I was planning on two trips, but that didn't happen. And then on October 1st, Councilmember Ohm and I are planning a District 2 meeting in Happiness Gardens at and I are planning a District 2 meeting in Happiness Gardens at 10:00 AM. We had, we were hoping to pull it off this last weekend, but with the city's website and communications, we thought it'd be a little bit tough. So, October 1st, we're hoping we have great weather like we had this last weekend and we hope people will come and chat with us about what's important in District 2 and in the city. There's a lot going on.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. On, just remind everybody, on the 24th, there's going to be a Clear Creek cleanup with Jefferson County that you can sign up. I will be attending that. Thank you.
Counselor Stites.
Sorry, I'm a slacker. I forgot one more thing. I got to go to Farmer's 5000 yesterday at Wheat Ridge High School. Lots of fun. There was a bunch of kids from a bunch of different schools. I think Stover was represented, Wilmore Davis was well represented, Prospect Valley, and Color Strand won the award for best participation. Again, I think that's like five or six years in a row, so Color Strand rocks. So, thank you.
They got a lot of runners there. All right. Any other elected officials' reports? Oh, Counselor Nosler back.
Just a reminder to folks that October 24th at Wheat Ridge High School, the school district will be hosting a community meeting to talk about the school closures, the elementary school closures of Vivian Color Strand and Wilmore Davis. So, community is invited to attend that meeting.
Okay. Anything else for our study session before I adjourn our study session? Okay. Thank you all for joining us. Thanks again to Renee and to the presenters for our land acknowledgement. Looking forward to it. So, we will adjourn that meeting. Before we go into another meeting, is, would anyone like to have a five-minute break? Okay, let's take five minutes and then we'll, we're having it right here.